Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is January 10, 2018. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who've placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this point, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minutebook of the township.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record an unanimous vote. At this point, I would like to acknowledge and welcome Commissioner Cobb to his first real meeting and acknowledge the absence of Commissioner Daley, who finished serving 12 years on the board and did very much to benefit the township, and I thank him for his service. Moving along. Go ahead. Thank you. Moving along, the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session following our January 8th meeting in order to discuss two personnel matters. Now we're moving to the public comment. The Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Going once, going twice. Okay. Now we'll move to the committee reports. And with that in mind, I'm going to do the second thing on the agenda before I do the first. The committee chairs and liaison assignments. The way our committees work here is we have liaisons, which are more obvious, and then we have these various advisory boards, and the zoning board, it's actually, makes its own decisions. And we have commissioners that are liaisons to all of those boards, and I will read those. And in addition to that, we have these committees, and you'll hear them referenced as we go through the agenda. The committees are kind of fake, because there's nobody on the committees. The way we do it is based on what advisory boards that you're sitting on, you're put in a slot in a committee, and it just helps us organize the agenda so we can go through with the same person reading the motions and divide up the motions. So that said, the liaisons, which are the more important. I will be serving as the zoning hearing board liaison, and I will continue chairing the financial advisory committee. Commissioner Standish will continue with the planning commission. Commissioner Shum and Commissioner Maxwell will be on the emergency services committee. Commissioner Wilson will be on the environmental advisory commission. Commissioner Graham will continue on the parks and rec advisory committee. Commissioner Maxwell, in addition to the emergency services committee, will be on the shade tree commission. And Commissioner Cobb will be on the library advisory committee. That, then our committee assignments, which is really, again, how we organize the agenda. I will be the internal affairs and zoning committee chair. Commissioner Standish, the community development committee chair. Commissioner Shum, the public works and facilities chair and co-chair of the public safety committee. Commissioner Wilson, the cultural and environmental resources committee. Commissioner Graham, the parks and recreational resources committee. Commissioner Maxwell, co-chair of the public safety committee. And Commissioner Cobb, the library committee. The black horse inn advisory committee, the municipal campus advisory committee, and the open space planning board have been terminated. If we need that kind of expertise, we will reconstitute those boards. But we want to try and keep things less bureaucratic. Now we go back to the first item, which is the January board listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the December check reconciliation in the amount of $1,245,237.79 in the January bill listing in the amount of $765,118.64. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record an unanimous vote. At our organizational meeting last week, we were tasked with selecting a township solicitor and acting on the zoning solicitor. So at this point, we are, I have a nomination for the township solicitor, and I'm making a motion concerning our existing township solicitor. I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint James J. Garrity of Whistler Pearlstein LP of Blue Bell, PA as the township solicitor. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Yeah. Record a 4-3 vote, and I would encourage you, Mr. Garrity, to come down. You have your majority. The zoning hearing board solicitor, there's been a little bit of a chicken and the egg issue we've been wrestling with, because by custom, we appoint that person, and apparently by law, they appoint it. So what we have done is, we've discussed it, we have our opinions and recommendations, and I, as the liaison, will take it to them in their meeting on January 22nd. And then we will, they will then vote to appoint a solicitor, and then we'll vote in the February meeting, and hopefully those, our ideas will be consistent enough with their ideas that that will work out. So we are not having a motion on that at this point. And we have an acting solicitor who can cover that meeting. Okay, that's, so that's item three on the agenda. Then we come to the zoning hearing board agenda. The next meeting of the zoning hearing board is scheduled for Monday, January 22nd. It's 7:00 in the Springfield Township Building. The zoning hearing board agenda has one item. Laura and Kevin Sullivan of 1504 Neeson Road in Orland are requesting four variances. One, to reduce side yard setback on one side from 12 to 9.7 feet. The same for another side, from 12 to 10.7 feet. To reduce aggregate side setback from 35 to 20.4 feet. And to increase lot building coverage from 20% to 23.3%. So that will be heard on the 22nd. That's item four on the agenda. And that concludes my report. So we now move to the chairman of the public works and facilities committee, Commissioner Shum.
May I actually second?
You're, yes. We've moved you up.
Didn't say, oh, I said seniority.
All right, great, thank you.
Don't mess it up.
Good evening. I have one item this evening concerning used office furniture. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the sale of the used office furniture from the municipal campus and used public works equipment via an electronic public auction known as Munisabid. The specific furniture and used equipment are set forth in memoranda dated December 26, 2017, and January 3, 2018, from the assistant township manager to the township manager. Is my motion?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record an unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Shum. We move on to the chairman of the community development committee, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions this evening. First concerns the Lloyd Tract Laverock subdivision plan, which proposes 32 single-family attached dwellings on 32.06 acres of land located at 1797 Willow Grove Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners accept a letter dated January 8, 2018, from Thomas G. Kessler of KB Newbold Lane LLC, extending the 90-day subdivision land development plan review period without limitation as to time. The extension of time will provide KB Newbold Lane LLC the opportunity to revise their land development plans to be in compliance with the Springfield Township Code. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record an unanimous vote.
Thank you. And next concerns the Sharp subdivision, which is a two-lot, single-family dwelling subdivision. The property maintains one single-family dwelling, and the second, single-family dwelling, which is contemplated on the newly created lot. This is at 750 Thomas Road. The property contains 1.77 acres of land and is a zoned double-A residential with the triple-A residential zoning district overlay. So I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the Sharp subdivision plan, 750 Thomas Road, which consists of the following. One, a seven-sheet preliminary final subdivision plan prepared by Cornerstone Consulting Engineers and Architectural, Inc., dated July 31, 2017, last revised October 19, 2017. And two, a copy of a post-construction stormwater management report prepared by Cornerstone Consulting Engineers and Architectural, Inc., dated August 11, 2017. The approval of the land development is subject to the applicant resolving all matters identified in a letter dated November 30, 2017, from the Office of the Township Engineer to the zoning officer. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record an unanimous vote.
Thank you, and that concludes my report for this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Standish. We move to the chairman of the cultural and environmental resources committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am pleased to announce that during the month of December, 2017, Springfield residents recycled 197.1 tons of material with a household participation rate of 84.8%. The net cost for the month was $17,084.74. For year-end, November 31, 2017, residents recycled a total of 2,378 tons of material, which was a 92% of the, 92% of the projected tonnage to be recycled. However, on a weekly basis, approximately 80% of the households participated in the recycling program. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We move to the co-chairman of the public safety committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening, it is the hiring of police officers. I move that the Board of Commissioners extend a conditional offer of employment as a probationary patrol officer in Springfield Township Police Department.
Oh, did I?
To Ralph James Burrows of Bowman Street, Philadelphia, PA, effective March 5, 2018. The condition of employment is successfully passing a physical and a psychological examination. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have one comment I'd like to make.
Go ahead.
In the two years that I've been on the board, we've had numerous departmental promotions and a couple of hirings. Through those interviews, I've always found something from the candidates that was either striking or impactful, in my opinion. However, Monday night, after giving it some thought for 36 to 48 hours, I really couldn't find anything that was really striking and impactful to myself. I know I have two motions to make this evening, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I would like to see us potentially retest and have the police chief present some new candidates to us. I know it could be a potential problem to the police department where it would cause a staffing issue, but I just wasn't really impressed with the two candidates, and that's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other?
I also have a comment concerning that matter, Mr. President, is that my comment is that we should, as a community, we should start to seek more diversity within the hiring of our police department, especially for women and minority candidates. And I think that having that is reflective of the community that they are servicing. So that would be my comment, to piggyback on what Mr., I mean, Commissioner Maxwell has stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the board?
I don't have any problem, particularly problem with Mike's suggestion, so, just to let you know. Procedurally, I don't know how this works, but, you know, if he's, you know, do we just not have a motion? Do we not?
No, well, we have a motion. He made a motion.
Yeah.
And seconded for one of them. I was perfectly content to support these two people. I think we're only going to likely to get one of them anyway. As far as Commissioner Graham's comments, I think we all agree with those. We've talked about that, and it's a rigorous process they go through, and the solution to increasing our diversity is to really help get more diversity at the beginning of the process, so more comes out at the end, and we are committed to do that.
If I may, Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd just like to, once again, commend our chief of police, Mike Pitco, for his willingness to work in having more women and minority candidates to be sought out within the next coming year. So kudos, and my, my thanks to chief of police, Mike Pitco, for his willingness to do that. Thank you.
And my concern is that there's a, there's a, if we go, the, what's the consortium process, where we work with all the other townships, so it's what we have done for a long time. That's a process that kind of begins in June, and they come out all ranked, and as the year goes on, they get picked off. People tend to, they're using the same rankings, the same metrics, so we do, we do, the quality does go down, their scores do go down. If we put it off now, we'll go further down, or we'll be forced to wait till after these guys retire, and we'll, we'll be shorthanded, which is not the end of the world. And then we, we could take another crack at it in the fall. So that, that's kind of the complexity that we face. I think I'm going to vote in favor, because I, I like, I particularly like this, is this the Philadelphia one? Which one are you?
Yeah, this is the other one.
This is the other one? I particularly like, but I had no reason to feel strongly the other way. The Philadelphia one really was very committed to community policing. He wanted to move from Philadelphia to the suburbs, because he said in the city, you can't follow up, because there's too much going on, and to move to the slower pace here, where the police officers not only do follow up, they take incredible pride in everything, because of the nature of our, the safety in the township. I was won over by him, but we'll, why don't we vote? Once somebody wants to say something, and how it comes out.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Could we, I know I asked this question Monday, but I'm not sure I got the answer. Could we potentially put our, our own test before the consortium, or is that conflicting with the test?
We, we can, we don't have to follow the consortium. We can do our own hiring, as long as it's a legal problem. Well, Mr. Garrity, you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I think you can do your own, but I don't know what commitments you have in terms of sharing the cost of the testing.
That's it. The cost is shared by 15 communities. Now, we've done it on our own, kind of to avoid this, but you also have to get through an agency where their examination and their examination process has been tried and true for the courts, because there's always going to be someone questioning the legitimacy of the examination, and there are a whole process. So that's one of the reasons we do it through the consortium. One is actually to attract a huge pool of good candidates, and then also to share in the cost and make sure that our process is tried and true by the courts.
Mr. President.
Can you do your own?
Can I ask, just for a point of clarification? If we do delay hiring these two individuals and look for other candidates, wouldn't we then be eligible to hire someone earlier on in the process? Because I know we lost a couple of good candidates to other townships that hired them quicker than we could make offers to them. If we recognize tonight that we have two spots we need to fill, wouldn't we be able to fill those with sort of top?
No, we'd further, go further down. These are the top ones left that we have. We'd either go further down, or we'd have to wait for the cycle again.
Two.
Or we'd go rogue.
Early in the fall.
Or we'd go rogue and do our own hiring process.
But presumably, we'd then get the top-tier individuals in the fall.
If we did, in fact, that's what we, we are doing now, is our, these openings do not exist.
Okay.
And we did jump forward to do it. Now, we just didn't jump.
You're jumping, you're jumping the gun a little bit here and now, because.
So we've got a little bit of leeway.
We've actually already done that, because we've had this problem in the past, but we haven't, I mean, we were wowed by two people that have taken other jobs in those meetings, too.
The next motion, Jonathan, is actually to make an offer effective July 9 of 2018, because we don't want to lose, this is the, the next guy's the Philadelphia fellow. Right. And you don't want to lose him, so we're trying, trying to get him to commit to us. Otherwise, you're going to keep going down the list.
But that next class would be eligible in September or so, where we'd be able to get really the top tier at that point.
Yeah, when that shake out? I don't know.
It, it really depends on when the rest of the group needs to hire, go through the hiring process.
Okay.
We've been trying to do it every year, but the group may say, hey, we're full, we're full, we're full. We don't have a need to go out and test, so it may be delay, or it may be that a smaller group goes out, or we go out on our own. So, and, and again, it's the top candidates that apply to Springfield, because each candidate has to go and apply to each individual town. So, you know, a group of them may say, oh, we only want to be hired by Abington or Upper Dublin, or, we have had a couple that said, we only want to be hired by Springfield or Upper Dublin. So, I mean, you know, it's their choice. There's no, there's no telling how it's going to shake out.
Right.
And then just to clarify more for the people listening to this, the way the process works in hiring is, they take a written test, they go through an oral test, and then those numbers get averaged together. One's weighted more than the other. Those get averaged together, and then if they're a veteran, they get extra points. But none of the ones we talked to now are, the veterans are the ones at the very, the beginning of the pool. You get the veterans, because they get a substantial amount. And these, the people tend to be really close together. It's like 89.6. Oh, yeah. Versus 89.2 that we're talking about. And we, but we are, have limited ability to jump. We have some, but in this case, we actually had none.
Right. And we lost our top two, because they decided to go somewhere else.
Right, they had, they had just grabbed other jobs in the last couple, even though we've moved it up as much as we thought we could, so.
So, I mean, I would say that I would, if Mr. Maxwell wants to vote, you know, against his, I would support him, but otherwise, I would vote in favor. So you just let me know, and.
Well, why don't we just vote on this? And it's not an insult to the person gets through 4-3, or. Okay. It's, hopefully, they won't remember who you are. All right. For the rest. Yeah, right. It's not going to be my problem. So, this, for the first one, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Was that, how many nays there? One, two?
It could be two or three.
Four? Okay, the motion, it was three, four. Did you get the names there?
Yes.
Let's do the other one.
All right, second one. I move that the Board of Commissioners extend a conditional offer of employment as a probationary patrol officer in the Springfield Township Police Department to Matthew Towser, Lawton Street, Philadelphia, PA, effective July 9, 2018. The condition of employment is successfully passing a physical and a psychological examination.
Okay, well, let's, we'll take the motion, then we'll discuss that. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a point of order here, and that is, that person was fourth on the list.
But, or was, weren't they? Absolutely, fourth on the list.
We have to pick the top three. So normally, and the top two kind of washed out, so we, if we had voted the third one in, then the fourth one would have instantaneously become the third one, and we could vote, and we can't vote the fourth one. And if these other two that got other jobs and the one we voted down are still on there.
I think it'd be okay, because the one candidate, she officially withdrew her nomination to be respectful of her other job offer.
Oh.
And so now you're down your top.
I think she got one in yesterday, didn't she?
Yeah, I think so. So I think you're down to your top three, so you can take any, any of your top three, because you were, you were presented three for each position.
Right.
So now you can select from either.
Okay. Well, it may be moot anyway, depending on what people vote. Any questions or comments on, I already made my comment on him before.
No, I would just state that I would respectfully add my previous comments to the first person to this one as well.
Okay. All in favor, please.
I have a question. So as we turn down the first candidate, does that mean the second candidate, we're now, we're now filling the position for the?
Oh, good point. Don, can we fill the first opening?
We can move him up to March 3.
Does your?
Well, except for he's employed. We'll make it March 5 at the earliest, because he's going to have to give notice to his current employer.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, yeah, but.
Does he have to change the motion?
Yeah, make the, make the motion, if he would, to be effective March 5, 2018.
Make the motion to amend the date of hire to March 5, 2018.
Okay, we have a motion to amend. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, now we're voting on the motion. We can vote for this. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That was just a procedural vote there. That was just to allow the amendment. Oh.
The date of hire.
Yes, yeah, that's just for the date of hire. Let's do that again. I promise, it doesn't really mean anything, but. So for the motion to amend the date of hire, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. Now, let's get to the meat of the motion, and now we're voting on what you thought we were voting on before. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And how many nays from my right? And we had, so it's still 4-3, but it's, okay. Three, that would be 3-4. That motion does not carry either. And does that conclude your report? Yes, Mr. President, that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. We move to the chairman of the Parks and Rec, Park and Recreation Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two announcements this evening. One is for Community Day. The Springfield Township Community Day Committee will be, will begin their planning efforts for the 2018 Community Day at a meeting to be held on January 17, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Springfield Township Building. The meeting will include discussions on aspects of the 2017 Community Day that were found to be highly successful, as well of those, as well as those activities that were not as popular. All residents interested in participating in the planning effort for the 2018 Community Day are encouraged to attend the meeting and present ideas on how to build success, build on the success of the previous Community Day festivities. That is the first announcement. The second is in celebration of the upcoming Dr. Martin Luther King Day of Service on January 15 of 2018. The Springfield Township High School's Voices of Excellence will be in partnership with Arcadia University for a day of service that will also include not only Arcadia University, but the Sheltonham NAACP, which, of which Springfield is a part of, and also State Senator Art Haywood. That concludes my report for the evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Finally, we turn to the chairman of the Library Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. While we are excited at the prospect of the library opening in a couple of weeks, we have not met as a committee, so I have no agenda.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes the committee reports. We are once more open for public comment. Is there any?
I'd like to make two announcements real quick.
Oh, go ahead.
First, I'd like to make mention that the Carson Valley Children's Age School in Flower Town, once again, will be hosting a gathering of neighbors on January 20, 2018, at 10:30 AM at the Mother Goose Cottage. There were letters sent out by the township, and it was previously discussed in December's meeting. The streets that are in close proximity to the school received letters from the township inviting them to attend.
Good.
A few things they will be talking about is the community phone number that the residents can access for questions or concerns. The, they will be discussing the land sale of the 22 acres, and they will also be introducing the education director.
Two acres or 10?
And a few other things. That is January 20 at 10:30 AM. The other thing I would like to make mention is, it's January, and in eight days' time, the township will be filled with our young, wonderful women wearing their green and brown vests, who represent the Springfield Township Girl Scouts Service Group. Their cookie sale begins on January 18. I encourage everybody in the township to look for these wonderful girls in our local shopping stores, hardware stores. If you could stop by and say hi to them, they would really appreciate it, and even better if you can help support their fundraiser. That would be great also.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. One other, just one, I want to make sure everybody knows, the opening date for the library is the 20th?
22nd.
22nd, Monday, the 22nd. Our brand-new library, which is looking better every day, it now has books in it, which is exciting, will be open there, moving everything around and getting ready, so that's just a week and a half away. It's very exciting, long process, and it's not easy to move a library, let alone move it twice, which is what they've had to do. Last chance for public comment. There being none, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Check again.[1769.33]